I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast, City Council. It is Tuesday, July 18, 2017. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge and vow. City of Palm Coast, we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A roll call, please. Mayor Holland. Here. Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Yeah.
Mayor, all members are present. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council's June 20, 2017 City Council business and July 11, 2017 City Council workshop.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We will now have a proclamation, which will be read by our Vice Mayor, Stephen Nobiel. It's a proclamation recognizing the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Whereas parks and recreation systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for millions of residents in communities around the world through recreation programming, leisure activities, and conservation efforts. And whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of society. And whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences create lifelines and continuous life experiences for older members of our community. And whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences generate opportunities for people to come together and experience a sense of community. And whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences pay dividends to communities by attracting businesses, jobs, and increasing house values. And whereas the City of Palm Coast recognizes the vital contributions of employees and volunteers in parks and recreation facilities. And whereas these dedicated supporters keep parks clean and safe for visitors, organize youth activities, provide educational programming on health, nutrition, first aid, and gardening, advocate for more open space and better trails. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Park and Recreation Month. Be it further resolved that we hereby request that during the Park and Recreation Month that all citizens enjoy what their community has to offer by taking part in their favorite sports, visiting the outdoors, and spending time with family and friends relaxing. Adopting this 18th day of July 2017, City of Palm Coast, signed, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to share some activities that we've got coming up. The theme this year is Get Your Play On. Tonight, of course, is Food Truck Tuesday, where we are featuring our BMX trick stars. They're going to be doing two shows. Saturday, we have the Tour de Palm Coast, led by city landscape architect Bill Butler. We're doing a new route this year through Lehigh Trail. It'll start at 8:00 here at City Hall. And next Wednesday is Parks and Play Night at the newly renovated Holland Park. Come out and join us for some special treats and games. So, thank you so much. Thank you for all you guys do. [applause]
Let's go up top.
Thank you. Good. Yeah. So good. It's good to see you. Okay. Should we start?
We're good.
We're good. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Super. Thanks again. Thank you.
Good to see you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. No. All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the second reading of an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article of Roman numeral six, Retirement, Division Two, which is the Volunteer Firefighters Retirement System and Trust Fund. This ordinance amends Section 2526, Definitions, Section 2529, Finances and Fund Management, Section 2532, Pre-Retirement Death, Section 253, Disability, and Section 2535, Optional Forms of Benefits. This ordinance provides for codification, severability of provisions. It repeals all ordinances in conflict herewith and provides for an effective date. This is a legislative matter. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, good morning.
Good morning.
You know, we have a career-paid fire department, but to supplement that, one of the things that Palm Coast has always been known for is a very strong volunteer force and something we're very fortunate to have. To help encourage membership for the volunteers, the city established a number of years ago a retirement program for those volunteers that's paid for strictly by part of your household insurance premiums. It's something the state collects. They collect it whether you use it or not, and then they distribute it for retirement programs for firefighters. So, we have a pension board that oversees that, and periodically... It doesn't make any changes to the plan. It doesn't have any financial impact on us. It is just strictly a housekeeping item that their attorney asked for you to take action on. This is a second reading. There has been no changes, and we believe it's ready for final action.
Councilmembers, any questions or discussion? None? It'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Three, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, take it back to the council, and entertain a motion.
Move approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four is as well an ordinance. So, Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for a little more than 3.2, more or less, acres of certain real property described as tax parcel ID numbers 711317037ORPOA0070. And that property is generally located between Lakeview Boulevard and Lewis Drive, and is more particularly described in Exhibit A to the ordinance. And it's being rezoned from multifamily residential 1, or MFR1, to single-family residential 2, or SFR2 zoning district. It provides for conflicts, for severability, and Mayor provides for an effective date. This is the, let's see, first reading, and it is a quasi-judicial matter, Mayor, so if there have been ex parte communications and context, those need to be disclosed at this time.
Any council member have any outside conversations? None?
Mayor, City Council, this is, if it looks like a rerun, it's a very similar process we've been going through. In the Matanzas Woods area, when we originally established zoning in Palm Coast, we had a lot of pockets of multifamily that were really nestled into the single-family. We have been working with those property owners to have those changed to single-family. Got a lot of cooperation. Number of parcels have already changed, and this is another one. So, it's actually, once again, a fairly simple process. Ida's going to walk you through the details.
Good morning. The rezoning request I'm presenting is referred to as 149 Lakeview Boulevard, or Application 3321. Just to orient you, we are in northern Palm Coast with this request. We're north of Matanzas Lakes Parkway, west of Interstate 95, east of US-1, and south of the Matanzas Woods Golf Course. The subject property is owned by Eminem Color LLC. It's three acres. The rezoning request is multifamily 1 to single-family 2. The original zoning was assigned during the 2001 citywide rezoning efforts. And just to zoom in a little closer, we have Lakeview Boulevard on the west, and we have Lewis Drive on the east. We're south of Lewis Shire Place and north of Lewiston Place. The future land use map designates this property as residential. Again, the current zoning at 149 Lakeview Boulevard is multifamily residential 1. That allows a density of up to eight units per acre, and the property is vacant today. The proposed zoning is single-family residential 2, and if you note in the map, it is consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding residential zoning, and this minimizes the potential for conflict should development occur. We did hold a neighborhood information meeting for this request. We notified approximately 80 neighbors on May 24. We held the neighborhood meeting here at City Hall on June 12. Seven persons attended, and to date, staff has received no adverse comments regarding this request. The property has two frontages. One is off Lakeview Boulevard, and the other is more internal to the neighborhood, Lewis Drive. We believe that when the property is developed, we would just allow access off Lewis Drive. Just to compare the development standards between multifamily 1, the existing zoning, and single-family 2, just briefly to highlight a few differences. The multifamily zoning allows a much smaller minimum living area, 650 square feet, versus the Palm Coast requirement of 1,200 square feet for single-family residential. The height for multifamily can go up to 50 feet versus 35 for single-family residential, and the density is higher, of course, with multifamily, eight dwelling units per acre versus a potential of five. This property is also unique. If you look at the aerial, and this shows a schematic, there's a large wetland in the center of this property. If this was developed for multifamily, there might be more incentive to mitigate for this wetland. However, with single-family development, it's likely that this wetland would remain and sort of be a privacy buffer. So, really, I think we're talking about at maximum two lots being developed from this piece of property. Also, there would be permitting questions that would need to be answered in terms of utilities and drainage. So, based on our Land Development Code, Chapter Two, Section 2.505, we find that the rezoning is compatible. We find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan because it reduces the potential of intrusive development. Of course, infrastructure is nearby, and the site is already designated residential on the flume. This would just permit less intensive zoning. Project would be subject to further review and compliance at the time of development. So, just to summarize, we've received no adverse comments. Future development would need to comply with all code's ordinances and requirements. It's consistent with the City of Palm Coast Comprehensive Plan, and the Planning Land Development Regulation Board recommended this rezoning request 6 to nothing on June 21, 2017. Therefore, the recommendations to approve Application 3321, the rezoning of 149 Lakeview Boulevard from multifamily 1 to single-family 2.
Any questions or comments?
Just one question. How did we convince them to change? I mean, what did we...
I have to credit my management.
Okay.
You provided us direction, Council, you know, many, many months ago, to try to work with these property owners, and then, you know, we would have some folks coming in for multifamily, wanting to develop multifamily, and how difficult that would be, and, you know, trying to... Just us talking to the landowner and working with them and trying to convince them to say, "Look, you know, multifamily's going to be very difficult. You're going to have a lot of angry neighbors, and your best bet would be to go single-family, being consistent with the neighborhood." So, it's just basically, you know, talking with them and working with all these property owners to do something that's more compatible with the neighborhood.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comments on Agenda Item Number Four, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to the council, entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Agenda Item Number Five, Resolutions. Resolution to establish the proposed maximum millage rate for fiscal year 2018 and set the first public hearing date on the budget. Mr. Lehman.
Mayor, City Council, this is, you know, really getting into the meat of budget. You've been having a number of meetings. Last workshop, we presented a preliminary general fund budget to you, which is where our property tax dollars primarily go to. You are required before August 1st to set the maximum millage rate, which they call the trim rate. So, today, the action is actually to establish that trim rate. Lena and Chris are going to give you an abbreviated version of the presentation they gave you last week. Take it from here, Lena.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
As you know, we met last week for our first budget workshop. We reviewed the proposed budget for the general fund. At that time, you provided direction to establish a trim rate at 4.6 mils. So, what you have before is a resolution adopting that millage rate. As you know, that will appear on the trim notices that will go out in August. They're distributed by the Property Appraisers Office. And I did want to just let you know that we do have our two public hearing dates for September. Our first public hearing, which will... That information will be included in the trim notices as well, will be Wednesday, September 6, 5:05 p.m., here at City Hall in the community wing. We also will have our final public hearing on September 20. Again, that's a Wednesday, 5:05 here in the community wing. That's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Last week, we added items to the budget to see where the trim rate might start with, so we can... When are we going to decide those items? So, not the budget, you know, but I don't want to add those items in and hold the whole budget. You see what I'm saying? Because I have my idea on where I want to vote on the budget that we had, but then we added those, I think it was five, five different items additionally. Where and when are we going to be able to say yea, nay? How? I mean, are we talking today about the police, the deputy?
Well, let me address the law enforcement issue, and then I'll let Chris address kind of the timing of the rest. Law enforcement is really a two-step process, and the next step is on your agenda next, or the first step is on your agenda next. And that is renewing the contract for law enforcement services. But then also, in that contract, it says that you have to establish a budget to actually fund it. So, no matter what you have in the contract, the budget actually then is an overriding factor, so that you have to be able to pay for it. So, you can decide on the additional deputies today, but then at budget time, you can actually reduce how many of those will occur this fiscal year, with the idea that you could add more in a future fiscal year, or you can pay for all five of them. That will be part of the budget process. Chris, as far as the rest of the items and the timing of when the budget will be presented for final approval, including whether those additional items are included, why don't you go over that, please?
Sure. One of... Excuse me. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
One of the items we talked about briefly last week was a splash pad had come up, some additional capital projects. We're actually going to be going over the capital projects next Tuesday, the 25th, so we'll have some more clarity on whether any of that will affect the final millage rate. We'll then go through the proprietary and special revenue funds two weeks after that, on August 8. There may or may not be some impact based on the millage rate for those funds. And then kind of the final whole package of the budget is put together on August 29, and that's really where we all have to be on the same page that, yes, this is the final millage rate, and this is what we're proposing for the final budget.
Okay. All right. So, we'll have the opportunity to decide the budget for the deputies, how we want to budget that, and then, because we have the streetlights, we have a splash pad, and there was something else.
Couple additional positions.
Positions, yeah, that's it.
The... What Chris and Lena will provide you is a spreadsheet that's interactive.
Right.
That if you include five deputies, this is what the millage rate has to be, et cetera. So, that's what we'll do on the 29th. That helps you make those decisions.
Because I just... I'm okay with the millage rate today, the trim. I just don't want to create a automatic ride. You know what I mean? I want to be able to stop and go, "No, no, no," or "Yea, yea, yea," whatever.
Still plenty of time. This sets the ceiling. You can't...
Right. Right. But I don't want to create a... I don't want to create a ride. That's all. I just want to say, "Well, we already decided," and boom. So, good.
Decisions, that's why the presentation's fairly short, is that this just sets the ceiling. It doesn't actually approve or adopt any budget.
Right. The August 29th date is really where all the pieces finally come together.
Okay. That's all I have, man.
Questions or comments? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comments on Agenda Item Number Five, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six, A Resolution Approving an Interlocal Agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services in Palm Coast, With Staffing Levels Determined by City Council Each Year During the Annual Budget Approval Process.
Mayor, City Council, once again, kind of continuing on with my comments from the last item. We have a current agreement between the sheriff and the City of Palm Coast. It's actually with the previous sheriff, and it's been going month to month. Whenever we get a new sheriff, we always have a new agreement. The proposal is very similar to our current agreement. It has a few changes that I've outlined in the report here that don't make a significant impact on operations. The idea behind how we pay for additional deputies is that there is an exhibit here, we'll call Exhibit A, that outlines how much each deputy actually costs. So, the deputies and the supervisors, et cetera. And then, that is what we pay for. Currently, it's, I believe the number's 25 additional deputies, and that includes supervisors. As you know, the sheriff has proposed five additional deputies. That is also included in Exhibit A. This is where, because of the budget process, that we've... Way it's written right now is that this would approve the five additional deputies, but during budget time, you could reduce that amount or delay the hiring of those deputies as a sheriff discussed with you during the workshop. The other key factor as far as additional deputies go is that we would not start paying those additional costs until they're actually hired. And hired means they would be on board, and then they'd go through the training and all that, but it would be that hire date. And it may be a promotional date for a lot of them, but then it would be a matter of hiring an additional deputy that was a general patrol officer. So, we're supporting this. I think it gives you the flexibility to decide during budget process how many deputies you actually fund. We think this is ready to go. The sheriff is in the audience to help answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council? Seeing none, I'll open up to public comment. Any member of the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number Six, please do so at this time.
Yeah, Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. As my comments from last workshop, I agree to hire the five. If they're going to be used for traffic, we need traffic in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I have a problem with paying twice for the same thing. We're paying... Taxes are going to the county for the debt for the sheriff's office, and now we pay the same thing for the sheriff. Why... I don't understand. I've been doing this for now for almost 20 years, wondering why. Why we have to have deputies? We have to pay for deputies. If he has 100 deputies, and 70% of Flagler County is Palm Coast, that means we should get 70% of the police department, or the deputies. But we're paying to bring those deputies in. Now, I've been here almost 25 years, and I've yet to see a deputy come down my street once in 25 years. So, I'm paying for nothing. You know, it's like going into a store, and you give the guy 10 bucks, and he says, "That's it." No? You walk out with nothing. And that's what I'm doing. I'm walking out, and I assume a lot of the people in Palm Coast are doing the same thing. I don't live... We don't live in a high-risk area yet. It probably will be when we come around to it. But to pay twice for something that we are supposed to get is... To me, it's ridiculous. It's throwing my money out the window. If he wants to do extra in Palm Coast, that's his business. Yes, he's the sheriff. But I don't want to pay for something that we're entitled to. So, I think you should think it over, and I think you should think over about the $2.5 million that we're spending every year for something that is entirely deserving of us. We got... We have the most people in Flagler, and we should get the most police protection in Flagler. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker?
Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Just in response to the commenters, thank you for your comment, sir, about support of the additional traffic units in Palm Coast. And, you know, Jack, I've listened to you say this every year and absolutely, you know, we can debate the issue on whether it's right or wrong if we have our own police department, if we don't have our own police department. The decision was made when the city incorporated in 1999 that the council wanted an additional level of service for law enforcement. That decision was made universally throughout the years and this is actually just addressing our increased population as we continue to grow. We're very proud of our law enforcement in our community. They do a great job. They continue to protect and keep our residents safe and I know they will in the future.
Council member, any other questions or comments?
One, one other question on the agreement on paragraph 8.2, the annual increase cap. I didn't have a chance to go back to the original, the original last year's agreement. Is the 5% an increase or is that what's in last year's contract?
Yes, that is one of the changes. Is it, the way it reads in intent is that it's actual increase up to currently 3% and this proposal is up to 5%. So, it can't go over 5%, but it necessarily goes up to that amount if the actual cost is less than.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Seven, a resolution approving the consolidation action plan for fiscal year. Thank you Sheriff Staley for being here today. Sorry, I didn't recognize the audience. Thank you. Approving the consolidate, consolidated action plan for fiscal year 2017, 2021, including the annual action plan for the fiscal year 2017 for CDBG funds.
Mayor City Council, this is going into our sixth year for our Community Development Block Grant. We're what you would call an entitlement community, meaning that we contract directly with the federal HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department. Don't have to go through the state. If you're below 50,000, you have to go through the state with a competitive process. But in order to do this, we have to have a five-year plan and then also a one-year action plan, something that we update every year. And this is a second five-year plan. So, Jose's going to walk you through that process for what our proposal is for not just kind of long-term five-year plan, but also this coming year. So, Jose, take it from here.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Jose Papa with the Community Development Department Planning Division. Just a quick overview of what we're going to present today. Again, just a history and background of the CDBG program, why we're here today, some of the required planning and procedures or processes that we have to go through, the findings of that five-year consolidated action plan, our goals and proposed activities for the next year and next five years, as well as the next steps for the program. Again, very briefly, CDBG is a program that started in 1974 and unlike other grant programs, this program provides a lot of discretion to the grantee, the municipality, on what type of activities will be funded with CDBG funds. The caveat there is that those activities must meet one of the national objectives of the program. And again, those would be one of three, that the activity benefits low and moderate income persons or a low moderate income area based on census. It's an activity that prevents or eliminates slum or blight. Or three, it addresses an urgent community need and that's usually in, as a result of an emergency or natural disaster to that community. In the past, CDBG funds have been used for the following activities in the city and that would include that infrastructure project in the Seminole Woods neighborhood, the multi-use path. Another popular activity that we've done is the providing financial assistance to low moderate income households to repair homes. That's been done at different sites throughout the city and over the past five years, 24 have been completed and we'll estimating to complete another six or seven in this upcoming year. And another one would be the scholarship for students to attend our, to the city's summer camp. That's only been enacted for four years, but as you can see, we've served close to 100 students with that program over the past four years. And finally, that the Flagler Free Clinic received some funding last year and that this funding has allowed them to expand some of the services that they provide to low moderate income residents in Palm Coast. Part of the requirements of this program is the completion of certain documents. We're here today to review the consolidated action plan, which is really a five-year long-range outlook on our, the proposed activities that we want to conduct using CDBG funds and also within that consolidated plan, having, within a strategic plan and basically just a more in-depth look at how those activities are to be carried out. Within that first five-year, within the first year of the five-year consolidated action plan is the annual action plan for the next year. And that's really the detail of what activities we'll fund for the next year. And that annual action plan comes to the council every year. We create a new one every year. And finally, other documents that are part of this program. Back in December, we approved, council approved the analysis of the impediments to fair housing choice, which again, the data and analysis fed the consolidated action plan. And every year, this probably in December, we'll provide the comprehensive annual performance and evaluation report for review and approval by council. And this is just, again, as it states, an end-of-year report on CDBG activities. The consolidated action plan, the new five-year draft or the new five-year plan, a lot of the findings and a lot of the goals and activities proposed within it are very consistent with the five, the previous five-year plan. One thing that the consolidated action plan does is that it updates the low moderate income census tracts. And this one would be based on the 2011, 2015 Five-Year American Community Survey. And as you can see there, a larger area of the city is now considered to be low moderate income census tract. And again, that's based on that five-year American Community Survey. And within that, that provides opportunities for potential infrastructure or public facilities improvements within those census tracts. Other findings, again, very consistent with the previous five-year plan, our housing continues to age, although fairly new, every five years, it gets five years older. City continues to be an aging community, are the number of residents we have that are 65 and over, continue to be above the state average. There's that increase in the low moderate income population. Public service needs exist throughout the city for various types of services. And finally, as founded within the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, we have a very limited housing choice. Our housing supply is heavily single-family and again, that potentially provides a challenge for certain households to find a livable housing unit that they can afford. So, as proposed, previously presented, the annual action, the action plan for fiscal year 2017, this is the proposed allocation, which was approved by the Citizens Advisory Task Force at their public hearing in June. And so, with the proposed allocation, we'll continue with the infrastructure project to complete the multi-use path in the Seminole Woods neighborhood and that's for 175,000. We'll continue to fund the housing program. That's to provide financial assistance for owner-occupied housing rehab for about 245,000. An expansion of our public service activities, again, with the potential, with the completion of the community center in early next year that provides the opportunities to expand our summer camp program. And so, we can provide additional funds for that, as well as, as we discussed at the workshop, the creation of a grant program to allow public, nonprofit public service providers to tap into some CDBG funds. And finally, continuing planning administration monitoring, 15,000. If we were to establish that grant program, we're going to need some assistance from our, our grant administrator, who's under contract to provide some of the legwork and background and paperwork that would need to be completed in order to establish that program. And so, at this point, today is the public hearing for final adoption of the plan. And once that's complete, we have until August 16th to submit the completed consolidated action plan and annual action plan to, to the U.S. Housing and Urban Development HUD. And that completes staff presentation.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Go ahead. You want me to go? You sure? Okay. Jose, question. Based on that table you had up there.
Yes, sir.
So, we have infrastructure, public works, public services, planning administration, monitoring. Those are things we know, we pretty much can plan and get those dollars. And the one that's going to be variable will be the housing program because we have to get people to apply in that, right? What, what happens if we don't spend all those dollars? What happens if we don't get enough applications into, to clear all that?
They carry over to the next year essentially that.
Effect the next year's?
The only way it affects next year's is if, there's a timeliness measure that CDBG uses. I don't like it too technical here, but essentially if you have one and a half times more than your last year's allocation in the bank, CDBG or HUD could essentially withhold that, that level from next year's allocation.
Now, you did mention in the last, we are going to have, we are going to initiate more programs to, for outreach for the program, for the housing program.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We found that it's grown every year. So, certainly the additional funds, we might not have to do much outreach because I think every year the word gets out in the community and there's more and more applications every year because every year that amount has gone up and every year that amount has been used.
Now, over the last, over the last few years, how have we panned out in the, on the housing program? Have we come out under? Have we hit the wall?
We're, we're holding our own. We're very comfortable with the number of applications we're getting, making sure that we get qualified applicants. I wouldn't say that, I think the need is there, but as the word gets out to those who have that need, they certainly take advantage of the program.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For Shipley.
And two of the programs, we had the children's summer camp and we had the free clinic. Do those just continue? They'll just continue to get what they're?
The summer camp program, because it's a city-run program, I think that will just continue, but under best practices of CD, that HUD recommends, the Flagler Free Clinic would be open, would be qualified to apply for the remaining public service funds.
Is that what they did last year? They had to apply?
That one was, it was, it was dedicated to them. Yes.
So, we have to rededicate it or we have to tell them to reapply?
They would have to apply this year. We will open up the public service program, at least the balance of the funds, to all nonprofits.
On the previous slide, Jose, one of the line items said that Palm Coast continued to be an aging community. Does that mean that these findings were representative of the median age of Palm Coast continuing to rise? Because I was under the impression we were going the opposite direction.
The median age, I will tell you, is decreasing, but in terms of what percentage of your population is 65 and over, it just continues to be above the state average. And that's what that really.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One other question on the housing component, Jose, remind me, is the funds that are used for that, are those outright grants to the qualifying homeowners or are those secured by a silent mortgage that retires itself? Those people continue to live in the homes that get rehabilitated?
Yes, part B of your, your, yes, sir.
I was going to say, does it work with, yeah, does it work with the ship program?
Yes, sir.
But you know, that may or may not mean.
There's a certain amount and that's just to, as you know, to eliminate that someone will use these funds to rehab their home, turn around and put it on the market. So, there is a period where we, we can recover the funds.
I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number Seven? Please do so at this time.
Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. Can you pull up the graph of the city where you had the? Four people there. Stop it. One minute. We lost. The comment has, it doesn't show anything south of, looks like Palm Coast Parkway.
Let me help you here, sir. Palm Coast Parkway, of course, it's not, it's basically at the top part of that screen. Oh, let me see.
Yeah. It's not working.
Pardon?
Freeze.
So, 100 is where the stops and then there's Graham Trail?
No, sir. I'm trying to.
Etiquette's not working.
Yeah.
Parallel to the N to the left, correct? If you look at the compass on top, it's directly to the left.
Yeah. Palm Coast Parkway.
That map doesn't include all of Palm Coast. The topmost east-west roadway that you see is Palm Coast Parkway. So, part of, a large part of that map is our area south of Palm Coast Parkway.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. I couldn't see it from the seat, so I just wanted to see it. Thank you. That's all I had.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to speak with you more about that, if you'd like.
Any other member from the public wish to make public comment?
Jack Carroll. What is low and moderate income consist of?
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Jose, can you address Mr. Carroll's questions about low and moderate and what that qualifies?
Yes, ma'am. Low moderate income are basically households or persons who earn 80% or less of the area median income. The area median income, and it depends on the size of the household. So, for a family of four, the median income is about, I believe, we're in the 45, 48,000 range. So, for a family of four to qualify as low moderate income, you're looking at $32,000 to $34,000. So, if you're a family of four earning $32,000, $34,000 or less, you qualify as a low moderate income household.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that helps.
Okay, counsel, any other question? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Eight, and other business, reaffirm the reappointment of Robert Schroeder to the Volunteer Firefighters Pension Board. Any questions or comments? Any member from the public wish to make a comment on this agenda item? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this board, entertain a motion.
Move approval, mayor. Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We will now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, or 14? Please come up and do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Sir, second. Moved, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Public participation. Any member of the public wishes to make comment on agenda items that are not on the agenda? Please do so at this time. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin following that.
Good morning. John Brady, City of Palm Coast. Some of you may recall, the last time I addressed the council, it was in terms of the callous, thoughtless action of removing objects from the memorial benches. Well, as. Well, as it turns out, free speech in Palm Coast is not free because the very next day at one o'clock, there was a city employee changing my water meter because as part of, as explained, an ongoing problem, they discovered that my water meter was reading erroneously. Subsequently, my water bill has increased twenty dollars a month. So apparently, free speech in Palm Coast is not free. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. Again, on my Waste Pro rolling on, okay? Mr. City Manager, I didn't agree with your comments from the last workshop and as this is, I've organized a committee in Hidden Lakes and we're going to go through the code enforcement with affidatas to present to the board that Waste Pro is doing the marks and we're also going to request that Waste Pro clean up the marks. We've been in contact with the local company, we've been in contact with Longwood, which is their headquarters, and they seem to be death ear to us. And so we're going to organize this. We've already had our first meeting and we handed out affidatas. We're going to have a second meeting and third meeting until we get a handful of affidatas to present. This has been an ongoing thing and I don't know what the rest of the city's skid mark is. I really don't care. I just care about my neighborhood and unfortunately, skid marks brings down your value of my, our property because it looks like somebody's in there doing drag racing. And it's every day, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Now, if Waste Pro doesn't care about their brakes, their tires, and their cost of taking care of their trucks, that's their problem. But because of our contract, it says that it will be charged three hundred dollars per incident. And if we don't enforce it, and I don't care about the compliance, okay? The compliance has already been passed as far as I'm concerned. Whoever the regional manager that they've been, that the city manager's been talking about, I really don't care. The problem I have is I have skid marks on my street and we want them removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Robin Rucker, Palm Coast. The reason that I am here is because Mr. Cuffis, Ms. Holland, and Mr. Cuff approved the FPL power line. My first question is, there was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Is that, my question is, is that the total budget for it or just the asphalting? Because of the fact that, my concern is because we did not hear any alternate solutions or any other alternate cost, not only are we talking about the asphalting, but the cost of workers removing and repaving lighting, which in the one meeting was said to be from thirty-two thousand to two-hundred thousand per mile. It's a two-point-two mile path. Gopher tortoise removal, which is one thousand to two thousand per turtle or tortoise. And then we also have a request by residents for a fence. And I have a petition that I'll present, a people who would also like a fence, which is upping the cost and upping the cost and upping the cost. And my concern now is the waste of taxpayers' money. Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Amy Alnaf of Palm Coast. To speak about the fence and the people who have signed for that fence, the only thing I can say about that is, I spoke to several people about having a security fence, but, and this one gentleman came out of the house and he says, oh, yeah, right across the street. He pointed to a house and he says, they were breaking into that house, all right? And he says, soon as they saw me on a cell phone, they called the police and the police came. This is wonderful for the police department. But if you're going to put no security fence on that, it's going to be much easier if somebody come off of that trail into somebody's back house. And the only security that I've heard is that you're going to have a patrolman on a bicycle. So we have no, no security at all on this path once you put it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
First, let me say this. We, we have, in my opinion, the best deputies in Florida. They're courteous when you, even when they give you a summons, they're courteous. But my question is this. I've, I've been coming to meetings now for, I've visited the head of the, the old city hall, but every time something goes up and you ask why, I always got the, the answer that, well, it's their property and they can do what they want. Now, I bought a house. It's my property, but I can't do what I want. If I want to paint my house purple, it's a no-no. But if a guy's got a business and he wants to paint his house, or his business orange, nobody says anything because he's a businessman and I'm only a resident. I happen to like, this is going to be funny, I happen to like weeds that have these little purple flowers and they grow maybe twelve, thirteen inches high, but I can't have them even though I like them. Somebody plants a rose plant, I mean, that's great, but I, I can't have mine. That, that's one thing that I always thought of. I've got to go out and cut it, or have it cut. So tell me, tell me what's the difference between a businessman having property and doing what he wants and this resident having property that has to do what you want?
Next speaker.
George Mannel, Palm Coast. We talking about five-year action plans here. Just to keep in the back of everybody's mind, I just recommend that we keep thinking about a standalone senior citizen center somewhere down the line. I know we're building out our community center and more wings, et cetera, but that space always has to be shared by somebody at this time or another. And I think as the city is growing and as Jose said, our population is older, I really think we need to get a standalone commu, uh, senior citizen center. Number two, with the recent plane crash just north of Matanzas, it was reported that the wreckage was found by a drone. And also in the news, Orange County has purchased drones for the fire department, under control of the fire department. And maybe somewhere down the line, this is something we need to look at. The drone they showed on TV also had an infrared camera so that if there is a structural fire and there is somebody in there, the drone can tell you where they actually are, helping the firefighters, not having to search the whole building, but be able to spot right where that victim might be and go right to it, thereby increasing the likelihood of helping the victim and saving the firefighters. So I know it's not in the budget now, but this may be something with the new technology coming up now to purchase our own drones under the control of the fire department for search, search and rescue, could also be used by police if they're, excuse me, you know, searching for a perpetrator, robber, or whatever. I know we have the helicopter, but I think a drone would substantially help that situation. Thank you.
Next speaker. Closed public comment. Mr. Landon, I would ask that somebody from the city utility department reach out to Mr. Brady and figure out why his increased cost of twenty dollars per month for his water bill.
I, I can tell you right now because it's actually an ongoing program if you'd like. The, the water meters naturally slow down over time and they'll actually stop. And so we have a program that we change out old meters. We particularly, we actually audit accounts and see those that are lower than normal and, and then go and, and have the meters tested. The idea that it happened the day after he spoke in front of city council is strictly a coincidence. We're changing out dozens of these every week and just to make sure that the meter's operating correctly. If it's, if it slowed down so that it's not registering the full amount of water going through, then Mr. Brady was actually getting cheap water, less than, than what other people are getting during that time. So now he's just paying for the full amount.
Well, I would just ask that someone reach out to him and just address and look at the issue.
Will do.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brady, please make sure you give the contact information. To Mr. Ebert's comments, all we can say is if anything you want to be, you know, brought forward before code board or anything else at any time, you know, we would suggest you do so. Thank you.
Barber's working with him.
That's good. And can you please address the comment about the, the total budget, a hundred and eighty, eighty-five thousand for the pavement of our path?
That is the contract as part of the overlaw, the overlay for the path, so that is the actual payment. City council has asked us to look into detail as far as lighting and other security. Not building fences, but actually doing landscape screening for those people that would like us to do that, to try to minimize visibility from, from the path into their backyards. Fences is really something that would be their responsibility though.
Okay, thank you. I don't want, normally we don't go...
I would like to say something, if it's okay. Is that all right?
Yep.
Thank you. I would like us to decide if a fence is going up or not. I would like that, I would like all of the safety issues and lighting to come to council. I'd like us to sit down and have that conversation. And I thought we were going to. I thought that was in the plans.
Absolutely, as far as the lighting and et cetera, as far as building...
When is that going to happen?
It may be next workshop. I'm not sure. It'll be sometime soon.
Thank you. I apologize, ma'am.
Next speaker. Jack, as far as the standards between a residential standard and a business standard, we don't allow businesses just to operate and get built without following our land development code, which establishes those standards. And so there's been many discussions about a purple house or not a purple house in Palm Coast. And the fact of the matter is, that was decided once again when the city incorporated, that they created a comprehensive plan, adopted a code to meet that standard, and that was the will of that council and continues to be the will of this council. I've not heard anything contrary to that. So as far as businesses going through a process, they go through the exact same process as a resident does for, for approval of businesses and, and plots and everything else that goes along with that. So, and to George, did he leave? Thank you for your comments about the senior center and the drones. So we will now move to agenda item number E, which is the city, council matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuff.
I have one item to bring up, mayor, and I'll try to be as brief as possible since apparently all five of us have given birth to the elephant and then invited it into the room here today, even though it's not an agenda item, and that's the news story on Flagler Live that ran last Friday. I think the appropriate place for that discussion is in a duly noticed public meeting where we can all be present and we can address each other as to our concerns and what action we want to take or don't want to take. I am not taking any exception to the story, but as I have said many times and probably will say many times more before my term is up, I am not a fan of T-shirt politics. If you want to buy fifty T-shirts the same color and show up here to show that you're all in favor of something or not in favor of something, that's fine. I'd be happy to listen to you, I'd be happy to take your position into consideration. But I don't represent fifty people that happen to have ten bucks to buy the same color T-shirt. I represent eighty-three-something thousand residents, the businesses, the employees of those businesses, the workers here in city hall, and dare I say it, even Mr. Landon, our current city manager. So whatever the city council proposes to do on this issue, my comments are that we do it with reasonable dispatch, but that we do it in an orderly and legally appropriate manner. We don't have the luxury of holding closed sessions where we ram bills packed with all kinds of pork and goodies through the Florida legislature. We don't have the ability to hold closed-door sessions in Washington and come up with legislation that will affect millions of people and then pop it up like a whack-a-mole to see whether it'll pass or not. We have to do things in public and in accordance with the sunshine law. And I would say that we need to keep in mind as we do that, assuming we do that, that what we do will affect not just Mr. Landon and his contract, but our ability to find a replacement for Mr. Landon when that time comes, whenever that is. If we get the reputation of being a city that has a knee-jerk reaction to one news story and eighty-four mostly anonymous comments, we are not going to get the quality of city manager applicants that the city deserves and that we need to take over the reins whenever Mr. Landon leaves. So that's my statement for today and appreciate the opportunity to make it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Yes, on the same note, I think that, you know, full disclosure, about two months ago, I went into Mr. Landon's office and I said, "Mr. Landon, I think it's time for a change." He then asked that he speak with, you know, his wife and then, of course, he had to speak with individual council members. That's very difficult for us as council members because we can't hear, he can't tell us what each one said and, and we don't expect him to. And each one of us did individually, I guess, speak to Flagler Live and we had a story out. All I'd like to say at this point is, we need to have a special workshop to discuss this as soon as possible, just to understand, just so we can speak to each other. That's really, you know, I don't know, and then come up with some decisions, some consensus, and then follow up with another meeting as to the action that we propose. And I, you know, I just think we need to have that done as soon as possible because I think the, the, my, my opinion is it is time for a refreshing, for a refresh in that position. And again, I want to say, it does not reflect on a single thing that occurred. This is my two years plus experience. I came in with that idea that it was time to refresh this position. And like I said, it's not, this is not a reflection on Mr. Landon, did this one thing bad or did these five things bad? It's just time for this council and for this city to have someone, someone that they can call their own. This is the guy we picked, this is the guy, or, or, you know, man or woman that we chose and, and that we need to have and that we'd like to have. So, you know, if we can have, however we want to do this, but I think we need a special session soon to, for us to be able to discuss this out in the open.
Thank you.
I am in, in concurrence with both of you gentlemen. I think everyone would benefit greatly from being able to speak openly in a noted, in a meeting between all of us. I think we can't hyperreact to just one news story that was posted and I would also appreciate the opportunity to discuss my opinions with everyone because right now I'm kind of trying to piece the story together to understand where everyone sits and I would appreciate the opportunity to clarify all that.
Counselwoman Shipley? No, nothing. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree that this needs to be... Yeah, I agree that this needs to be a discussion on city council. This is a decision that we make as a council on who is our city manager and who represents us legally. So, we take these issues and discussions very seriously. So I'm recommending that we have an independent workshop just with this council to discuss these matters. And I'm going to ask staff to schedule that.
You, you, what you mean independent, you mean separate from a regular workshop?
Yeah, I just think this needs to be discussed separately from that. And I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later, so I'm asking staff to please schedule something with each of our calendars.
Okay, good, sounds great. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
May I ask one thing? As far as our council, do we have a consensus of who we want to have in attendance? I'm not necessarily sure whether we would all feel comfortable with our city manager being present.
It's a public meeting, so anybody can attend.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep. But it will just be us discussing it, so.
I would recommend the attorney be there, too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
The attorney would recommend it as well.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I think our city attorney has to be.
I'm guessing you want someone from the city clerk's office as well.
Our, our city attorney has to be at every publicly noticed workshop, so, or public meeting, so. Speaking of, okay, city council, our city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay. City manager matters not on the agenda.
First of all, I totally concur. I'm looking forward to getting the true story instead of some of the fiction and some of the rumors and misinformation out there. So I look forward to that. Secondly, you know, this little follow-up on some activities, tonight is Food Truck Tuesday. This is all part of our recreation week. This, tonight, weather says it's going to be good, so it's between 5:00 and 8:00 here at Central Park. And the entertainment is the BMX Tricksters. So, bring out the kids, they should, they should enjoy that. And this Saturday at 8:00 AM is our annual tour to Palm Coast. This is where we lead a bicycle tour through our paths. There's two options this year, seven and 12 and a half miles. We meet here at city hall at 8:00 AM this Saturday. And then there's a slew of other activities that if you go to our website of, that the recreation department is putting on. The last thing, I sent out something, I think it was this morning, that we're, part of our after-action item for our recent hurricane was our evacuation zones are confusing here in Palm Coast. They're kind of statewide, if not nationwide, where they're given letters, A, B, C. So, depending on the severity of the storm coming your way, it depends on who is asked to evacuate. The problem is, if Zone C is asked to evacuate, then people confuse that with the C-section. It's not necessarily that just the C-section. So, we are actually going to initiate a little program to put out on existing street signs what evacuation zone the neighborhood is in. So hopefully that will help avoid some of those, that confusion, you should see that happening here in the next, next few months. That, ma'am, I have nothing more to add.
Okay.